One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Melissa Peppin is absent. We'll depend on July when we have Stephanie and Greg with us.
Second. List of additions to the consent agenda, any other changes or additions, subtractions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, I.
I.
All opposed, same side. Communications recognition.
No one here.
It's July.
There was one person on Zoom about we had some issues last time and left to speak today to verify that everything we're doing was correct. This time there was a person on there for about 25 minutes and didn't speak. I don't think we had any issues, but we just double check to make sure that's always going to be available.
Moving on to board committee. Presentation.
We came to a settlement with contracts.
Great.
Anybody have any questions, but it was.
Question I have, the change in billing for the activity buses. What's the cost impact to the district?
If I would have known you were going to ask me that, I would have brought my stuff over. I just, I'm sorry, I don't have it right.
It's pretty close.
Pretty close. We did figure it out.
We did back it up.
No, I just, I don't have it.
We did a lot of this backward, backward, to calculate to find out. It actually came up.
So anyways.
That's the new cost of those.
Yeah, it went to hourly for activities rather than mileage plus hours. Because it was mileage plus driver hours.
Plus, there was also a fuel surcharge.
Correct.
So we dropped the fuel surcharge, dropped the mileage, just.
Just for activities, yeah.
I can't go.
No.
Yeah.
I sent their contract.
I was just like.
Yeah.
They looked a little bit lost.
And a clause was taken out.
Yes.
Concerning bus age, correct?
I'm sorry.
The clause was taken out.
Yes, it was. As long as they need Department of Transportation.
Yes.
That was the contract. Which really what we did is we, they gave the proposal. We called it one time. But we stuck with their structure.
Yes, we agreed to their structure.
Which is actually better than just for your security because we had three different four business bus companies going from one location with different set of line. But the hours were fairly similar. So that was probably a plus. And we were going to address it, because I think our strategy was is that we were going to have a chart of every town and business or set of mileage. I think they only checked as much as they had here. But what hourly is, I think it was.
Any other questions for the transportation committee? Moving on to West Central.
We met in Paintsville this time to look at the house they're using for the sale program. Did everybody see it in the paper? Yeah, it was a really good article. The person in charge has painted all the rooms, the place looks nice, fresh, whatever. Told us what she's going to use the rooms for. They have no kids from Melrose this year. They could have had one, but they had a curriculum already figured out for them this coming year, so they just decided to go with that. So the kids are coming from the other schools. Eight to 10, they were eminent and hot. So, I mean, they'll take the kids out to jobs, to work jobs, they'll switch that around. Learning basic skills, so it's set up just like a house. Their calendar is going with Paintsville because they'll get their food from Paintsville, so that's why they decided to go with that. So, so we discussed that, or went through it, kind of discussed it a little more.
Each district provides transportation.
Yes.
Okay.
And the pair of.
And the pair of, okay.
Yeah, and then Paintsville is looking at providing, they will provide transportation to the job sites in Paintsville.
Okay.
So, so that's taken care of. They're still kind of working that out a little bit. It's pretty flexible, I guess. Then we finished contracts. Talked about, still having one position to fill because somebody resigned. That was about.
So, summer projects, it's been very busy since July 1st. Computer lab in the elementary, that's some water, issues in there in the past. It's a big source of units. We fixed that. There was still carpeting in there, some of the countertops, cabinets, this has become work over the years. Carpeting's in, the cabinets will be in sometime in August. Jerry Schultz will be very happy about that because we've always dealt with some smells in there in the fall and stuff like that. Cement work for the sidewalk started last week. We've been out about getting close to finishing on that. There were some pieces that had to be replaced, and if you ever want to see why they did the piece of concrete right outside the main entrance there, you got a straight shot from my window, and that's why I asked them to replace it. They have those jogging grass things, where the kids just kind of cross the grass and stuff, so we just made a straight line across there, so it's more safer, easier to remove snow. We are going to replace the base and the pillars on the south side by the auditorium. If you want to ever see an engineering feat, go take a look at those bases right now while they're open. The infrastructure of the bases, whatever brick they had left when they had the projects done, there's a mishmash of bricks in there. Go take a look at it, it is amazing. They're going to create solid forms or forms on four of those bases, solid concrete. They're going to reuse the colors that are on top of it. We got the same company that did the board out in front, they're going to come in and do stainless steel or aluminum wrap around it. The nodes on the top are going to be gone, and they'll just have the color around there with the actual school colors. We're going to see how this is going to work out because we have 10 others around the building that aren't here. So this is kind of the prototype, because the end of the work, so. Windows on the 100 wing right down this hallway facing to the north, those should be start replacing sometime yet this week. H back in the weight room waiting for parts. Hopefully that time period between late July, early August, or mid-August when we're not using it, they can go over and put the air conditioning in there. Parts for the playground replacements should also be in first week of August, they'll get those put in for school starts. If you haven't been down, or the elementary cafeteria is done, it looks absolutely good. It's really. And once again, thanks to Helen Corning who donated that tile to us at a rather reduced cost, that would have been pretty expensive if it was otherwise. We sent the quote in to do the owners and strokes throughout the district, so they all naturally talked about that last night, waiting to hear back from them. Also waiting to get quotes back and to replace some of the inside doors with DLC, so. A lot of projects going on this part of this beginning of fiscal year '25, and hopefully we'll get them all wrapped up. And one of the things for those members of the committee, and we have some negotiations going on this week. But for other members that are on the collective bargaining, humans are going to have to get those one in there, and maybe in mid-August, just to get them moving forward now.
Would chips get moved?
At the bottom.
Was that for the preschool or was that for?
It was for the main, they did put, they did put chips down in preschool, but they needed to replace the ones with the main elementary.
They got some on the way from preschool.
Questions for Greg? Moving on to non-exempt, early childhood program. Kelly New is here to give us a presentation on what's going on within the early childhood program and things to take a look at in the future.
All right, so Greg had asked me to present, and just to give you guys a little update, there's been lots of changes in the past five years or so in early childhood, so I just wanted to share a few things with you. The three categories in early childhood is early childhood screening, early childhood family education, ECFE, and school readiness in preschool. To top it off, early childhood screening, every child who enters kindergarten in the Melrose School District and across Minnesota needs to be preschool or early childhood screened. We currently do the screening in English, Spanish, or a combination of both. A lot of families will say, oh, we only speak, you know, my child only speaks Spanish or English, but a lot of times they hear Spanish, and so we try to get the best results by screening our kids both in English and Spanish if they have any, if they hear any Spanish in the home. What's included in the screening, this hasn't really changed, there's a vision and hearing screening, we collect health history, immunization records. Then we do some things about skills and thinking, communication and language. We do some large and small muscle activities, and then there's a questionnaire about social and emotional development. So what happens is the kids go in, they do the activities with our screeners. Our screening coordinator is Stephanie Struz, and our preschool teachers, we take preschool off various days throughout the year. And then our preschool teachers screen the kids on those days. Janelle Hoff, the retired school nurse, does our health screenings, and we have a Beatrice and Bear to help with that, with our Spanish translation. This year we did 108 total screenings. We did 18 translated screenings, and then as we take a look as a whole, we just finished the report that we sent to the state of Minnesota about what our findings were. We sent eight students to do vision referrals, six to go to the medical doctor, 15 to do speech and language further testing, 10 to do cognitive further testing, and 10 to do further social emotional testing. So what that means is 15 kids will probably refer to speech-language pathologists, and they'll go through various tests that apply to them, and they may or may not qualify for speech services. But it's a great way to intervene early so that we can catch these kids, and a lot of times, especially like in speech and language, if we can intervene early when a kid turns just four, they can graduate out of our speech services, you know, like by the time at the end of first, second grade. So, interesting thing, reimbursement rates is based on when we screen them. So if we screen them, you know, at age four is what the state of Minnesota, if they actually say three years, between three years and nine months, and four years is the perfect time to screen kids, but that's a really small window. So anyway, we screen them, you know, we worked really hard this year to try to get all of the kids who were in preschool screened, all the kids who were on our census screened, but, you know, we're still going to get some kids in kindergarten that come that will screen the first day of kindergarten, so. And just pop in with questions as we go along. So early childhood family education has been, the state of Minnesota, I think they just celebrated their 50th anniversary last year. It's the idea of teachers, their parents being the number one teacher. As we're seeing it today, we really feel like parents need more, more help, more assistance to be good parents as we're battling technology and things like that, and so this is definitely an area of growth which I would like to explore further. Right now we have one night a month with Ms. Jennifer Frank and Ms. Sarah Kofelt. They do stop and play, and it's a fun night where parents do activities with their kids. Many of you have participated in ECFE as your children were growing up. We also do storytime with Ms. Jen, and that's twice a month at the Great River Regional Library. One of the hard things about early childhood family education is it takes two staff members. So it takes a teacher and a parent educator. Now, across the state of Minnesota, there are not enough parent educators, and there's not enough people going into parent education. So they're starting to do some initiatives to convince or to entice people to go into this field. So either, like Ms. Sarah is a parent educator, she was actually, my daughter who just graduated from high school was a parent educator when we went through ECFE. So she's been working with us for a long time, but as she's heading into retirement, we might need to, hopefully we'll be able to recruit somebody, or we might need to do some variances in order to fulfill that requirement. So areas for growth is weekly evening classes, six weeks, Tuesday nights or something, daytime weekly classes. We used to have, Ms. Patty used to do a Spanish immersion or a Spanish family class during the day. As she was retiring this year, she was, you know, talking about how many good connections she made with our new Spanish-speaking families when she had done that program. Also, parenting educator in the public. So as we realize that sometimes parents aren't coming to us, the idea through speaking with other community educators are bringing the parent educators out to people such as, I know in, I talked with the director in Alexandria, he had somebody going into Jennie O once a month, and people just come and ask questions. And so, so trying to, instead of assuming people are going to come to us, try to get the information out to them. So, interesting thing about ECFE funding, it's $134 per child based on the census, which I complete each fall. This is what our census looked like last year. And so, what can that money be used for? Obviously paying for your actual ECFE class, so your teachers and your supplies and things like that. But we can also do things like, like family nights, more like early childhood carnivals. You can purchase books and do take-home kits, things like that. And so those are, those are definitely things that we're going to be looking at further this year as we're trying to grow our ECFE funding and trying to figure out how can we help people, parents, how can we get that information out to them? So the last category is school readiness in preschool. So children between the ages of three and, it's really three and six. We have Ms. Lisa and Ms. Stephanie, Ms. Stephanie was new last year. Ms. Megan Beckeys will be joining us this year, she took the place of retiring Ms. Patty. We have early childhood special ed teachers, Ms. Michaela Moritz, and Ms. Lexi Hyder, she is new this year. We also work closely with our speech-language pathology, occupational therapy, and we have two rock star paraprofessionals in our classrooms that help with all of our little people. So, this is where some of the changes are happening in, in school readiness is more and more curriculum, more and more testing, and more and more training that the state is requiring. So we have curriculum, we do a social emotional curriculum in both pre-K1 and pre-K2. We do a program called Handwriting Without Tears, which I think is kind of funny. And then new this year, all of our teachers are required to become letters trained. It's about pre-reading in preschool, so our teachers will be going through that training. New also this year is English Language Services for our ECSE students. That is something that they rolled out last year, and we are working on it this year. And then assessment, so the state of Minnesota is focusing on this, that's kind of dark, but the kindergarten entry profile. So they are requiring everybody to change their assessments to be kept approved. And so we are changing our assessment, which the preschool teachers are not too sad about because their prior one was just a ton of paperwork. So they're okay with that, but it's, it's one of those things that we're changing just because the state of Minnesota is requiring us to. The other thing that they changed is that all preschool teachers will need to be licensed by 2028. So, we do have, Ms. Lisa Gert doesn't have a teaching license, but she will be grandfathered in. And she, because she had taught this year. Anybody that we hire from here on out will either need to get licensed by the time 2028 comes around, or, you know, I don't know if we'll have to, hopefully all the teachers that we're hiring have to be licensed in order to, in order to be hired here, so. Lots of changes coming through. So this is our, the classes that we offer and fees. Preschool one, we've got three-day half-day, two-day half-day. We've got a mixed ages class that's a three-day half-day. And we have two sections of preschool, two in the morning and two in the afternoon. So, right now we only have half-day preschool. People can use wraparound care to make a full-day experience. But as I, Greg had asked me about, you know, what's happening in the world of preschool is people are going away from half-day preschool because it's harder for parents to transport. And then, right now we're pretty lucky that we have the Tricat bus that brings people to and from preschool. However, if the Tricat bus would decide, you know, if something would change, that would put a pretty big hole in our program because we have approximately, you know, we have about 10 kids riding the bus in the morning and the afternoon. And we did have Tricat this last, so some of our new students that transitioned mid-year had wanted to attend, and they didn't have any midday transportation, and Tricat couldn't fit them in the schedule. And so, that's kind of, that's kind of frustrating because I had worked, they had scholarships, they're all ready to go, but transportation was the one item that we couldn't, we couldn't make work. So, the other thing is this last item, increasing difficulty supporting students with IEPs in the wraparound care model. So, right now if you have an IEP or, you know, it's one of those, depending upon what our needs are currently in wraparound care and how the student can, you know, transition and things like that, we may be able to help them. You know, we may be able to have them there, but some of our kids who have more needs are not able to attend because we don't have one-on-one, or we don't have paras, we just have our two Brenda and Bear to work in wraparound care, and they're awesome, but they can only juggle so much. So, like for example, Albany is doing a one-day all-day, a three-day all-day, and five-day all-day. But the thing about that is we need more space. So, as we look on the horizon, that's definitely an area for growth because it's something that parents are wanting. It's something that we see on the horizon, is something, you know, that, that people, people want. Sometimes it's a better situation, there's always like, and sometimes we do offer half-days for those parents who, you know, so sometimes it's a mixture. So, more, people are wanting more preschool than less as a whole. So I've talked a little bit about this scholarship, as you sometimes hear in the news, about money being put to early childhood, there's a Pathway One scholarship. That one is awarded to individual students that will go with them wherever they want, they can use it at preschool or early childhood center. Pathway Two is money that's allocated to us. We have $46,000 that's awarded to us. So the scholarships though, as we're giving those out are based on actual, like service hours, what it actually costs, not what we charge. So it's, it's a little bit of an inflated cost, as you look at $46,000, it's a lot of money. And so, when you're billing to these groups, you bill actual, actual costs, so. So in order to be, to accept the Pathway funds, we have to be parent aware certified, which means that we are using curriculum and assessments, and our teachers have, have participated in all of these trainings and things like that. Right now we can't use any of those Pathway One funds for our wraparound care, it's something that I'm working on. But there's a little disconnect as, I don't know, like the, there's a switch in the women and children group through MDH, so I think that's where our log is coming in, that we'll, we'll hear from them soon. The other thing is voluntary pre-K and school readiness plus, and this is a program that made the news this year. They were talking about putting a lot of more money into it. For this, we fill out an application, how many people apply for education cot or education benefits, how many, you know, people you know, are, there's, there's a whole long questionnaire of what we fill out. We weren't awarded any seats initially last year, the second half of the year, we were awarded six seats. So we went back and we refunded the preschool fees from January 1st to June for those families. So it was like, they, they were pretty happy about, about that. So, but we couldn't do anything beyond January 1st because people had printed their tax receipts for childcare, so they don't want to, they don't want to mess with that, so. So preschool enrollment, the funny thing about preschool enrollment, as you look at these numbers, is they're pretty light. But we will see enrollment throughout the school year. Sometimes it's, I always joke, and like, people see the bus roll by and they're like, how old are you anyway? Yeah, exactly. So, some things, so our enrollment is always changing. We'll get quite a few kids the first day, the first week of school. We have kids that are currently in the birth-to-program through West Central Education that will transition into our programs at their third birthday. When we're screening kids and preschool screening, we might recommend having them in some preschool, you know, just to help boost their skills. Referrals from the Help Me Grow program, which is primarily people, things that come up during their well-child checks at the doctors. This is a funny one, students successfully becoming potty trained. It's, it's, in order to attend preschool, if they don't have an IEP, they need to be potty trained. And it's becoming, it's kind of being bumped later and later and later, and so a lot of, a lot of four-year-olds have to wait until mid-year until they can become potty trained to attend preschool.
How do you know if they need an IEP? Like, that's almost self-selecting for kids that probably need.
Well, no, so like, if there's a need for, you know, like if, if the team feels like that there's, there's those things, as we screen them, then it will be a situation, like, let me tell you, Lisa Gert is an expert at potty training, and she can talk to people, and she knows, so there's some leeway there, but.
But sometimes there's a delay, like getting the process, so you have a three-and-a-half, four-year-old that should be potty trained. One, sometimes the parents don't even bring them in. They're like, oh, they're not potty trained, they're not qualified. But some of those kids, they're like, they need an IEP, you know, they are IEP kids.
Exactly.
Then the turnaround to get the IEP accomplished.
Right, and we always work with those situations. It's kind of a case-by-case situation, if parents come to us and say, you know what, we, we have these concerns, we really want them to be in, you know, but they're not potty trained, you know, we can, we work with families. But as a whole, it's, it's, it's one of those interesting changes. Other things happen, daycare housing changes. Last year we saw our new families immigrating here, and so we had quite a few new Spanish-speaking preschoolers, and I, I, we had a really positive experience. We had some really great Spanish-speaking kids in our afternoon class, and it was, you know, some of the kids were teaching, you know, our staff, Spanish words, and, and, you know, and I was like, preschool's the perfect place to learn English because we do so many manipulatives, you say red, and you say red, and so it was, it was, it was fun for Ms. Stephanie and her mixed ages class last year. So, that kind of sums it all up in a little bit, but questions, thoughts, comments? All things early childhood.
A lot of movement pieces in these programs, people at the state understand it. Certainly we continue to deal with learning disabilities in our K through 12 program. We've always known all along that early intervention is the best bet to alleviate some of these issues. So the earlier we can get these students in here, we can deal with some of those issues. It makes for a much more successful educational program for them, and it's. It makes for a much more successful educational program for them, and it's much more easier under K-12. So, thank you for, to Kelly, for continuing to grow this program and get the right supports in place so that we have a successful early childhood program that continues to practice. It's a very good thing to have. Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks for coming.
Moving on to item nine, consent agenda. Motion to approve except consent agenda listed. Highlights?
Just hiring some more coaches, some more PEC people, just to make them more aware of the service director that we were pursuing, found out. So, we're going to go to Plan B. Not sure where Plan B is at this point in time, but we'll figure something out. It was a hard, arduous process, process this whole afternoon, but at the end, they found out. So, then that is some back and forth in coaches hiring and resigning.
This is Stephanie on here.
Someone who is very, very assertive at wanting to continue to coach, and she does a great job at it. We watch what happens softball, we like that.
So, if it wouldn't have went well with softball, you wouldn't have allowed me?
That would have been in discussion between her and I, not her and Kelly. We can't, she's, she's done, she did a great job in softball.
She helps.
Yeah.
She loves to help with coaching.
It's either going to stay in on the, or change softball. It's awesome.
I'm not a part of that one.
Give us the building block.
It's all our kids.
Oh, yeah.
Questions or comments?
Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda listed? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Moving on to treasurer's reports. Motion to approve except treasurer's report. So move in a second.
So, so June is a little bit different for the month in that when we do this regular monthly close, it's not a complete close. It won't be fully closed until we get through the audit. But, this is our soft close of just the normal things that we have. There will still be some revenue to book, of course, and then also some expenses that haven't come in. But, everything is looking very similar to prior years, so I don't have any concerns about anything.
Questions or comments? No surprise this is good. Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Moving on to action items. First would be donations and gifts. Motion to accept donations and gifts as listed. In a second. I'm sorry.
Nice, good, Midsummer gifts there, pretty self-explanatory. And I can tell you, the athletes that get those football camp t-shirts are just excited about them. There's our summer rec programs, they like them. So, thank you to those sponsors for providing that, still need support, I'm sure.
Questions or comments beyond expressing our appreciation? We'll call.
Yes. Please, yes.
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve, accept final revision of fiscal year '24 budgets. Motion. In a second.
One second. So, again, we don't have everything for this current fiscal year, but this is our best attempt. It is looking like we have a little bit more that will be taken to the fund balances at the end of the year. This is primarily due to the fact that we have more interest income than anticipated, so that's a good thing. And it's not something that we can really budget tightly because you just don't know how that's going to continue or when interest rates are going to change. We also are seeing a little bit more in medical assistance. And I think that's a change from what West Central Ed is putting in, so that's a little unexpected as well. We are seeing a little bit less in expenses. And apparently, I did not do a very good job in budgeting for our health insurance costs. So, that was a miss on my part. And then, we had a few LTAF projects that did not happen this year that will happen next year instead. So, they just kind of flipped, we just didn't get them done in June, so we'll get them done in July. So, it's just kind of a year-end thing. This was also the first year of the Minnesota-funded food service. And so, we are seeing more revenue for food service than we have, than we anticipated. That is also restricted fund, so it's not like we can use those funds for anything else. So, we'll just have to make sure that we take a look at that more. And then, there are some fundraisers that the student activities accounts don't do every year. And I wasn't as aware that some of them only do them every other year, every third year. And so, we had a little bit more that we thought we were going to take in for fundraiser revenue. So, it is a bit of a change, but again, I don't have everything for expenses, and I'm still working off of some estimates for revenue. So, this is not necessarily final. But, it is the final revision to a budget. So, it is a final budget for-
Final revision until the audit is completed.
Yes, yes.
When, when I go through this with Stephanie, and I, you know, I'm not an accountant like she is, but I've done this, you know, the first thing that I would know is something, wow, looks like we have a $550,000 surplus this year, but as Stephanie explained, there's, there's still a lot of things in there that will come in the next two, balance out the balance sheet a little bit with some special ed funding that we're doing with West Central Ed right now. They have a new business manager as well, she's done a good job, but she's coordinating a lot of things with a lot of districts. I can almost certainly guarantee we're going to have a surplus this year. That's, that Stephanie alluded to, that will go into the fund balance. How much that is, I wouldn't venture a guess right now. We had roughly about $30,000 last year, which is pretty good when you think about a $20 million budget. But, the ultimate reality of the year is we're financially, we're pretty cheap. Finding people is just a difficult thing.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. I'd have, see, motion to approve resolution for calling the election.
One second.
In a second. Second.
Standard election year resolution, to make sure that the polling places are going to be there, working in Stearns County ballots, getting the ballot in place after the, opening the, to file for offices done. So, we get the ballots and everything down in the places and ready to go for the election in November. Pretty standard. But, this is general elections, so it's pretty- General election. Just got to make sure that we get our stuff on there so they put it on the ballot.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Next, other contracts. First would be a motion to approve except contract legacy bus service.
I like the motion.
Yeah, second. I'll second.
We'll be talking about the transportation. The Department of Transit Committee went well. You know, got their signature sheets in today, so we'll be ready to go for the next four years. Legacy is owned by Paul Clench.
Eric did get a comment earlier than you did, but then, were there, did they have concern?
No.
Were they satisfied with what they got?
No.
Hey, Rachel.
With the reason, with the reason, they didn't have anything that we should be more than that.
No, no, no.
Or reason that we should hold this up.
No. I would have brought it up, but this went a lot smoother than the last one, four years ago. We got a system in place in Congress.
And Randy, Randy was on it.
Were you on, oh, you were on, man.
No, I thought it was very cordial. We tried to follow the, the rules. They did their proposal, we figured out, and I was thinking more of what Eric was saying, you know, went back. And we knew what we wanted to kind of see at the end. They changed structures on us, we went back and basically changed the structure to what we wanted to go with. We had, just for everybody's sake, we had Cole Spring, Haynesville, and there was another one, there was a third one, Albany. Look over Cole Spring, Cole Spring, Cole Spring, Haynesville, and Albany. We kind of looked what was the average, and they kind of lined, we basically fell within within that path. I mean, I feel good for their sake, I think we feel good for their sake.
It all kind of ran their-
No surprise, the, the new guy ran a lot of it.
Yeah.
And it was, it was good.
They initiated it.
Yeah, yeah.
Very lighthearted.
Yeah. A smile and a happy face and-
No, and they do excellent work.
Yeah.
We did have a couple, we did address a couple of the issues that we've had in the last four years. I think we got those things resolved, moving forward.
It's the things that were put in place with notification.
They'll say things.
Is it cancellation, it needs to be for a certain time, if not, we're going to open something.
There will be some responsibility, added responsibility on our busing transportation person. I've looked him on that already, he's like, that it is, he's well aware of it. There've been too many times where they pull up and then he runs out and says, "Oh, I'm sorry, cancel."
Yeah, just, but it shows the cost of that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or two, there's a couple of cases where two of them showed. So, it, it does, I think there just needs to be a little more coordination. And Greg and I, we talked about that.
Going to put systems in place for that.
It was really just about, if there's a mistake, it doesn't cost the bus company money because-
Like, that driver's coming in.
Yeah, because they have to be in and there, whatever. It doesn't make sense, it's, I think, it was appropriate. Yeah.
And if there's a, so if there's a request from the district for a change or consideration of something, there's a buy new, there's a mechanism.
Yep, take that.
We put in a timeframe.
We put time frames.
Time frames for cancellation, and then, you know, the second part was an emergency or last minute.
Correct.
If they don't get us the request by, within a certain amount of time, there's an additional charge for that.
But if, but if we request a change in the, in the route?
Oh, you're saying about route.
I'm talking about the opposite. Yeah, we did, we did have those discussions, we hired all some of the people as well.
That info is in the contract. There is a process for that.
So, it's the, is the issue, is this resolved?
It is resolved.
It is resolved.
There was a, there was a verbal agreement.
Yep. I'm not going to drive by and it's not going to be, I'm beating that at the end of the road. Tell people three different cases.
Questions? Any questions versus legacy? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Second would be a motion to approve the contract for Melrose Bus Service.
Second.
Same. Hearing good.
Yes, thanks.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. I'd have the motion to approve contract with New Meeting Bus Service. So move. Second. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion to approve contract with the Williams Bus Service. So move, in a second.
One second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. A motion to go, for the board to go into closed meeting for the, for the purpose of superintendent evaluation. Kelly? And so move. In a second. I'm sorry. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side.